Yeah, I don't know. Actually, I think Mark's gonna take the chair. Around. Well, I have a feel. I don't want to go in. But I can, you know, I love the fair, but it's. Especially with two of us, it's like very intense and expensive. Tickets are so expensive. Have you gone to the fair?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna like volunteer. I'm having my husband take me down. I guess. Grand. And I'm spending $200, like $60. Who grand? We leave.
This is fairly. And they just.
Now, are they all like?
Out of the.
Is that forever?
In Westchester. I'm low down.
Yeah. Really have stuff for like little kids.
Oh, yeah.
And crashed over against the building and the rear. Totally checked it out.
I used to love that. And now it's such a mom. It's about ten minutes. I know.
Yeah, that's how I'm happy to come.
It's been pretty crazy, my buddy. Now, you stayed fair.
It was fair, mate.
I know. So is your turn?
Um, no, no, that's the one on the belly. Uh, seventeen hundred block of Westchester, right out of Lowstown. Uh, staying dry. Uh, the new one out there. I got a rate for it.
Yeah.
I need to get a test to see if I have cancer.
But yes, it's the new one there on the left. It says, you know, just a little wall.
I don't worry, mate.
Yeah, I just can't think of the name.
But you know what? Only about two percent is in there. It's all about. Two to five percent is in there. It's all over. They're around Houston, looking down on us. They're back in the middle of the gym. She had a tumor. She's.
Mr. Redd.
Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the West Goshen Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, August the 2nd, 2022. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the moral which stands on a nation undergone indivisible, without any injustice at all.
So please be aware, this meeting is being livestreamed on the Township YouTube channel, and also the meeting may be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. Uh, we start our meetings with the opportunity for public comment on any items that are not on the agenda this evening. If there's anyone here who has a question for the board, has an issue to raise, or a comment to make, please do so now. Nate?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there are any ordinances or laws against planting bamboo in West Goshen Township?
Yes, there are.
And if somebody is doing that, who would I contact?
I'm just gonna report that to Jamie or myself.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Nate. Are there any other public comments or questions? Very good. We'll move on to the first item on the agenda tonight, which is a presentation of the annual report from Westchester Public Library. And with us this evening is Ms. Dow.
Yes.
Welcome, Ms. Dow.
Uh, yes, I'm Victoria Dow. I'm the director of the Westchester Public Library. And I have an apology from Mary Brooks that she can't be here this evening. She's out of town, so I'm standing in for her. And so thank you very much to West Goshen for your continued support of the library and the allocation that you make every year. Our annual report, which I'm sure Mr. Becher supplied to you, shows that fifty-seven percent of our operating budget comes from government sources, which is state, county, and local municipalities, including West Goshen Township. And we're heartened by the county's decision in this past year to increase its allocation to libraries, something that recognizes the value of libraries to the community. Also note that the library actively raises twenty-three percent of its operating budget through fundraising. So board members and staff are committing their own time and resources to raising money for our operating budget, and will continue to do so. And things that have recently impacted our budget. Our decision to reduce or eliminate fees to use library materials, specifically in this case DVDs, to make the library more accessible to all residents, in keeping with our mission and in line with similar actions of many libraries, has resulted in the loss of several thousand dollars in annual revenue. To it in 2019, our income from fines and fees was $29,000. In 2021, it was $12,800. So there's a big difference there, but we felt it was the right thing to do, and it has made that DVD collection more accessible to members of the community who might not be able to afford the fee that was levied in the past. We're also making gradual increases to staff wages and salaries to remain competitive and retain our hardworking staff. We respectfully ask that you consider increasing the $1 per capita in allocation. If not this year, then in the next year or the coming years. Our understanding is that some libraries in the county receive $3 per capita from their local municipalities in their area. And there's one in our service area that allocates a little over $2 per capita. And I should add that the borough of Westchester, in their cash allocation to the library and the utilities and maintenance that they provide, comes to about $6 per capita for the borough. With an increased allocation, we could purchase additional materials desired by our users, especially eBooks, which can cost up to three times more than the print books. And I should add something here that I was looking at this afternoon in the way of statistics, that the usage of the eBooks as of the 31st of July this year is actually higher in total than it was at the same time in 2020. And 2020, that period from March to June, was when we saw the highest increase that you could possibly imagine because nobody had access to the library books, the print books, so they were looking at eBooks. So that usage continues to grow. It's very popular. People are looking for classics, bestsellers, children's books, everything you can imagine. We could also update our physical space by adding more seating, installing better lighting and other improvements. And we can continue to work towards our goal of paying our staff a fair wage, especially as the minimum wage increases, which I'm sure it will at some point. But again, thank you very much for your support, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Dow. Is there any questions from the board? You have all the materials, our packets, all the information here.
Chris has my contact information if you have any questions down the line.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, so I'm reading your, uh, your cash, modified cash basis statement here.
Mm-hmm.
Is, am I reading it correctly? That your access to public support and revenue over expenses for donations without restrictions was $1,314,000?
No, no, no. That's, 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 that's the entire library system. I think there's, there's, I included, I tried to include only the pages for Westchester Public Library, but there's some statements from the auditors that include some other information. Okay? So the audit that is done, that Westchester Public Library is included in, is done for the entire library system, all the members, except for one or two, I believe. So when the auditors do that, they will report on the entire income and holdings of the entire library system all together. And then they pull out the separate libraries. So the last two pages in there should be the statement of our, our position.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the packet here. We have page thirty-three and forty-eight from the audit report. It's specific to the Westchester.
Yes.
Westchester library system.
Yeah. I mean, if you want to see the whole audit, I'm happy to send it to you. I mean, it's, it's, it's a public document. You can see what everybody else has been doing.
Do I have any other questions? Anyone else on the board have a question? Well, thank you very much again. We appreciate your time this evening, and we're sorry that your colleague couldn't be here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda for us is agenda item number five, which is the mid-year 2022 budget review and discussion. So for a couple of years now, we, the board has taken the opportunity to ask that the finance director prepare kind of where are we with respect to our revenues and expenses as of June of the year for the budget year? And Christine is here with us tonight, and she has shared with the board a kind of update relative to the key movements of both revenues and expenses. And Christine, do you want to say a few words around, around those items, or just want to open it up for questions?
Uh, I mean, we can just open it up for questions. I did include, um, you know, pretty detailed explanations as to what my methodology was with coming up with some of these variances were. So if anybody has any specific questions on any of them, I'm happy to answer.
So board, have you got any specific questions on these, these key variances that are highlighted on the screen here?
I guess my question was the fire inspection fees. I thought you were still continuing to do that in your bird party, you know?
No, they have, they have not been currently, they have not been currently, we're not currently being done. Okay. That's what, what did I say here? I think we're expecting to pick up with that in September again. But that had not been affirmed for the last several months. So that, that's a part of the difference there.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Christine, we discussed this prior, but if we could go over it again, just for a public record. For the expenses over the budget, we have a police extra duty for $75,000 and a police UPS detail for $6,500. But for the revenues over budget, special police services come to only $60,000. So the two don't match, they don't equal. Are we not charging the proper amount for the police extra duties? Because it looks as if we're spending more than what we're receiving.
Well, it's not necessarily that. So the UPS detail, that's just based on usage, you know, what their requests are for, for coverage. So that, that's the numbers there. Um, the extra duty, it's, it's never going to be a hundred percent reimbursement. I don't know if you remember, but I want to say it was back in July of 2021. We instituted that thirty-two percent, you know, extra charge to the, to the salary portion to try to, you know, incorporate some of those extra charges that the township has, you know, in terms of salaries and benefits and things like that. Special police services includes many, many, many more things outside of extra duty and UPS detail too. So that, that plays into it a little bit as well. That's, um, you know, I, I can't think of them offhand, but you know, I, I don't, I don't know offhand, but, um, you know, certain, certain services that they provide that may not be, you know, directly pay related, but, but get charged to special police services. So it's not, it's, it's not just including salary and reimbursements for, for police salaries and special police services.
I recognize we did make an adjustment in the, the charge attribute to reflect some of the other expenses besides actual pay in the envelope, such as pension and so forth. Should we take another look at that, that include other expenses so that they wouldn't be fully reimbursed? So they wouldn't have a deficit for the revenues over budget with what we're expending, you know, for expenditure?
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't, you know, totally speak to that, that we would have to do some sort of cost analysis as to, I'm not exactly sure where the thirty-two percent came from. I wasn't really involved enough, but, um, you would have to do some sort of cost analysis to come out with, you know, a relative percentage of what all the extras are costing the township, you know, to add to that. I, I, I don't, thirty-two percent may be adequate, it may be more, I, I don't really know. But that was what was, you know, decided.
Well, my only point is if we're having police doing extra duties, we should be, it should basically be a wash. You know, whomever is requesting those extra duties should be paying the full cost for the township to provide that service to them. And we should not be seeing a, you know, different differential there between the two. So I think that's something we should need to take a look at.
So I'm hearing John suggest that you want us, you're asking that Christine and her team is part of this budget cycle that comes up with a fully burdened cost for 2023 for police special services?
I mean, just, just so that your expectations are, you know, sort of like, we're never gonna, it's never gonna be able to be exact. I mean, because, you know, insurance costs are different every year. You know, insurance costs are different per employee, depending on who's working the extra duty. You're never going to get something that is entirely accurate. All we can do is, is sort of work on the best guess. But, you know, there's a lot of variables in there, and there's a lot of things that fluctuate and are, are different, you know, from month to month, or employee to employee, and things like that, so.
It should be possible for 2023 to look at 2020, I'll say 2022's experience, a year's experience and say, hey, this is why.
Yeah.
The burden cost was of providing that service, and this is how it would wash out. And we'll set that as the reimbursable rate for any extra duties in 23. And like you said, it won't be a hundred percent accurate, but it may be a lot better, more accurate than thirty-two percent is just a. So it's part of the budget process. I think I'm hearing board support, just do that calculation and come up with a suggested cost rate for those extra duty.
Yeah, my, my, my mind is, we don't want to be providing service to like QVC or UPS or whatever the private entity might be. And basically that's providing them a service for extra duty that we're not getting reimbursable.
And is QVC included in some of these numbers here? Because that's another service we provide. It actually increases the service we're providing.
Yep.
Is that in, like, the overall budget?
Uh, that's probably part of some of the extra duty. I'm not exactly sure payroll wise where that gets charged to, but it does get received in the special police services. And they have really increased, um, the amount of police overspending that they're requesting this year compared to two years prior.
That's what I'm asking. I wonder if it would be advantageous in order to compare 22 to 23 to bring them out, the bigger ones out, to make sure we're getting the money that we have? I don't know. That's a suggestion, to make sure we're getting them back and refusing for the services.
I think you've heard the kind of questions that are being asked. Christine, we're just asking you to take a look at this and say, what would be a reasonable way to come up with a more calculated, equitable reimbursement rate for these special duty, like duty services that we're providing? So what would you provide us with, something that we can hopefully agree on in the budget process?
Okay.
This is really good, though. Very clear. I was able to really understand what your thinking was.
I tried to be, I, I tried to put, you know, my whole thought process in there, just so everybody.
He does every time.
That's what I did last year too. So I just, I wanted it to be, you know, hopefully as clear as possible, so nobody would have any questions.
But it's not really a flash in the dark. I think it's worthy, you know, hearing you talk to it. There's two biggest rumors on this whole sheet is obviously on the revenue side, on the transfer tax and on the earned income tax. On the transfer tax, we've already had previous comments made at public meetings about the one-off nature of some of these commercial property sales that contributed to this particular over revenue that we're seeing this year. Could you, though, talk to your thoughts on the earned income tax and how, what you're seeing this year? What you think, how Keystone is doing in projecting this as we go into the 2023 budget? Because that is a significant piece of what we look to see on this.
So for EIT, I actually reached out to Keystone to get some additional information. And I actually do get quarterly reports on them. I knew that Woodlands was a big driver for them. So once that sort of started impacting our revenues, I was able to give them a list of those street addresses, and they could give me a report of how much EIT was coming from those properties specifically. And honestly, that's been a huge driver so far this year. So just for the first quarter of 2022, we've received $30,000 in EIT revenue from Woodlands alone. We received $30,000 in all of last year. So we're way ahead in that aspect. And I don't have the second quarter report yet, so where we are halfway through the year. But, but the Woodlands, um, I think it's just as hard for that, for Keystone to track as it is for us to track. You know, um, I think the pace of construction seems to fluctuate, you know? We have no real way knowing when people are actually, actually gonna move in and start living and, and, you know, working here. So I think that that makes it a little difficult. But I do think once Woodlands is done, some of those uncertainties will, will come out of that area, and it'll be a little bit easier for us to predict. But that's really the driving factor right now is just the pace of the Woodlands. There, there hasn't really been any significant changes in businesses or anything like that that would really, really drive that, that I'm aware of so far this year. I haven't seen anything, you know, out of the ordinary, so.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Do you have any feel for the effect it would have upon our revenue on the number of reassessments that homeowners are making about their tax liability for real estate? Is that something that's going to impact us further down the line here, do you think?
I, I, it will. I will say I did build that into my real estate tax number this year. I, I did account for, um, tax assessments. Uh, because I, I will say, as, as soon as people are moving into the Woodlands, they're yielding their tax assessment and they're, they're winning it. So that is decreasing the amount of revenue that, that we're gonna get.
Well, on the other hand, what about people's houses that have been assessed in fifty years or ten years?
So that's a county, so.
That's accountable.
That's a county job. You don't want to go there anywhere.
Yeah, that, that's something we have no control over. We use the county assessments for, for our tax buildings. So whatever the county has, it's, it's what we have to use, so.
Any other questions?
This isn't really a question for you as much as it is for the board. The $10,000 for the subdivision land provision fees for the proposed motel in Carter Drive? Is that part of the overlay area?
Is that?
Yeah, it is in the overlay, yes.
It is.
So that's an allowable, like, by right use?
It's not much of a version.
I know, but did, did we specify?
Underline, so.
It implies the university. Oh, not the entire, okay.
Well, so I presume the underlines only allows for this construction, right? I mean, overall, because this is really good news. I mean, I've mentioned that to bottom line here, but the bottom line is that our, that our current forecast for a year, for the year outcome in 2022, it substantially improved over our original budget. We knew when we opened into the budget year, there was some moving parts to this. You know, we authorized the budget that was showing potential deficit. Or did have a deficit, but now at this point in the year, we're showing it service for the year. So I know we've authorized some non-budgeted expenditures in previous meetings, but.
And those are, those are all taken into account here. So that's part of what you're looking at. There's still a lot of time left in the year, so things could still change. But as of right now, that's certainly what we're, what we're looking at, so.
Also, well, thank you very much for preparing this and making sure the board's fully informed about all these moving parts. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number six is discussion regarding the proposed development of six eleven East Neil Street in Westchester Borough with two distribution warehouses. Chris, I believe you have some information here.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, so this does not involve a land development project in West Goshen Township, but it abuts the jurisdictional boundary of the borough and West Goshen. Uh, we became aware that this is a site on East Neil Street, right near Baltimore Street in Westchester Borough. The site runs along the township border. And previously was outlined for an Amazon distribution center that was proposed. However, that plan was withdrawn October of 2021. Uh, we recently became aware through a county, through Chester Fandigley Commission review letter, that a new land development application was submitted to the borough for the site. Um, it proposes the construction of two distribution warehouse buildings totaling 523,653 square feet. One important item to note was the previously proposed Amazon warehouse site was about 143,000 square feet. And with the Amazon site, the township had engaged Patrick McKenna from Gotham Greenwood and Andrew Parker from McMorvan Taylor to provide legal counsel on traffic engineering services, respectively, for this project. Um, reviewing the information on the history, the township did have significant concerns about truck traffic traveling onto West Town Road 202 through the previous proposal. Uh, Mr. Parker and Mr. McKenna provided comments on the traffic study that was completed. They did attend meetings in the borough to voice the township's concerns and coordinate with the applicants team regarding possible mitigation measures. With this change and reviewing the plans, Rick did take a brief look at the plans. This is going to be slightly different from what we can tell in terms of traffic from what was previously proposed. Amazon uses vans primarily. This, we're looking at tractor trailer and employee traffic based on what was provided to us through, through the plans. Um, and based on the information that's been received, both from the county and Westchester Borough, providing us with copies of the plans, I think that the board and the township should follow the same course of action that we did with the Amazon warehouse.
And in terms of engaging the consultant, the traffic consultant then?
Correct.
So it's like a, um, so board, do we have a question? I want to start it off. Rick, I don't know if you put the traffic that's proposed, this, this proposal versus what the Amazon proposal was. Is it bigger trucks, but less often versus Amazon's small van trucks, but not as big a warehouse?
Well, here's the thing, we don't know.
We don't know?
Um, the only thing I can guess from the plans, because they're truck turning templates for WB sixty-two trucks, which are fifty-three foot tractor trailers, is that they're gonna be using fifty-three foot tractor trailers predominantly. That could be incorrect, but if you also look at the configuration of the building, these are all loading docks for tractor trailers. So, but we don't have the traffic stuff. So I don't have enough information to tell for sure, but based on the configuration of the building and truck turning templates, I'm guessing it's primarily tractor trailers.
No tenants have been identified, though. I called the developer myself to just find out if there was a tenant, so that you could be educated about that. They're building this on spec, but they have no tenant. So that's going to change. I mean, Rick is guessing, and even if they did a traffic study, it's probably doing it based on potentially worst case and the largest type of vehicle, but that could completely change depending on who they ultimately would lease to.
Yeah, the traffic study would be done based on IT standards, Institute of Traffic Engineering standards, with assumed values for the square footage of buildings and the type of vehicles to be used. And the square footage will stay the same, but any type of vehicles could be different.
So let me get this straight. Now, this developer's gonna build these two warehouse sites here and then find tenants?
Well, they may not go to build it, but they're certainly seeking land development approval before they find tenants. Now, I mean, they're continuing to look for tenants, but they will go through the process to have it be approved, regardless of whether they find tenants or not. Whether they ultimately go to put a shovel on the ground, I don't know. That depends on how they're gonna finance it and.
Kristen, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if they do have land development approval from the borough or the MPC, they have five years in which to do the project, correct?
Not really. I mean, it, the, the plan is not subjected to changes in the ordinance for a period of five years. It doesn't mean on year five, five years and one day, they can't do it. If there were changes in the ordinance, they have to bring their plan current to the revised ordinances. But the borough's zoning ordinance was just recently, entirely new borough zoning ordinance was adopted in the fall of 2021. So not to say it can't change again, but they went through a two-year process to update their zoning ordinance, so.
Rick, would it be reasonable to assume that tractor trailers are really gonna go down Baltimore Street to the Auto Park Boulevard and out to West Town Road that way? I mean, to me, any other route seems much more difficult for them.
I think that's a reasonable assumption because trying to go out. I think that's a reasonable assumption because trying to go out Neels to West Town, that corner at the Government Services Center, is they begin with, and then for large tractor trailers, it would be extremely difficult if not impossible in Gochee.
Now, this is located in a borough, not in the township of West Goshen, correct?
Correct.
What, uh, legal leverage do we have or what standing do we have as a township in this lane development process?
Not, not much, really. But I think it's important for our, for our concerns that we may have to be articulated to the developer.
It's a byright use under the borough zoning ordinance, so your leverage is less because it's not like there's going to be a conditional use hearing where you would be requesting party status. Um, but that doesn't mean you can't have your consultants weigh in on whether, you know, they believe that the applicant needs the burden of proof under the, the borough's
I have some question. I have some questions about, so, to stormwater management. The first one is, it, it appears as though their applicant is requesting three waivers from the stormwater management, the borough code. Why are they doing that?
Oh, because it's a, it's an Act Two site and they probably can't infiltrate groundwater into a site that has contamination.
There's too much soil contamination, so they can't meet the, just as Kristen said, can't be infiltration criteria.
I think this was the former, I think the seasonal farm.
Wyatt, yeah, it was. So I guess all the semi-volatiles and polyaromatic hydrocarbons and metals that exceed the Pennsylvania Farm Harmless Protection are not to be cleaned up? Are they just going to act to it?
There's definitely a cleanup plan that's ongoing today as we speak.
Okay.
Yeah, Wyatt is on the hook for that. So Wyatt has an agreement with the DEP to do the cleanup.
And I guess, um, the stormwater discharge, um, I'm assuming it's probably going to be, if the level is going to be monitored and that's the, and the dissection and all that?
Well, it's not going to be monitored. It's going to have to meet the requirements of the code, but there's no monitoring requirement.
Well, there's the normal maintenance obligations and monitoring of that, but not monitoring sense of the.
There's no, there's no flow monitor.
And they're just saying stormwater discharge would be visually monitored?
That's typically how it is monitored now, yes.
So, Rick, if they can't do infiltration of stormwater on the site, what, what will the, and asking for variances against, you know, like those stormwater practices, what will the stormwater management ultimately look like? And is it going to be to the detriment of West Goshen Township potentially?
Um, I don't know if it's to the detriment, but, and again, I barely looked at these plans, but from what I saw when I briefly reviewed them, they're looking at a combination of rain gardens and modified release concept underground storage. So rain gardens use about the transpiration rather than infiltration to get rid of water. Modified release concept is an extended detention facility. So it stores the stormwater and releases it very slowly, but it, it does release it. It's not infiltrated into the ground and it will, over time, be released to the streams. So.
That's a much rarer for rainwater guard, I'd say, to you.
Well, I don't have that plan sheet here, but I think there, if I remember correctly, I think there are three areas, three or four areas that are being proposed for by retention facilities.
Do you have more questions?
It's just hard to think that potentially more contamination could be as a result of their efforts.
Well, I'm assuming they're cap it. I mean, whatever remediation required, they're not going to be allowed to. They're going to have to cap whatever's, you know, before they put the buildings up and everything.
Yeah, but even the modified release concept, that's probably contaminating.
Well, I think you're mixing two things up. You're mixing up stormwater and soil contamination, and that's not necessarily the same thing. So in fact, it usually isn't the same thing. So, yeah, the, the stormwater concern is that the rate and volume of water released post-development is less than or equal to the rate and volume released pre-development. And they have to meet that criteria. Now, the problem with that is rate can definitely be controlled. Volume is a lot more difficult if you can't infiltrate. So whether they can meet that volume requirement, probably not. And maybe one of the waivers they're requesting, I'm, I'm not sure what waivers they're requesting.
Rick, isn't the site today a lot of impervious cover? I mean, it was the former Wyatt buildings, and I think a lot of it is covered with, but still impervious cover.
I'm not really sure. I mean, I've been by there, but I mean, there's some grass and stuff growing in there, but I don't really know which percentage of impervious is.
They didn't cap that when they moved out of it?
I mean, I think there's a great, it's not a grass field, I guess is what I wanted to point out. There is some, you know, significant impervious cover already on site.
Concrete structures.
Yeah, concrete. The structures aren't there, but I think where the structures were and there were parking areas, I know.
Yeah.
Because I know the reason, one, the reason for West Goshen, when we're dealing with the Baltimore Road call back replacement, one of the proposed locations for parking is going to be on one of these tracks for temporary parking, excuse me, for Dewey Pile or Sartor. We have to provide, we might have to provide temporary parking to that. So this was discussed, this site would be one of them. It's appropriate, already paved area to park on.
Yeah.
And the other thing to remember for stormwater management, if it's already impervious, it's not like having a, a pervious meadow or grass condition where, I mean, you're getting a lot of change. If it's already impervious, they can keep that impervious and it doesn't count against the stormwater management.
Well, again, I'll go back to a question that, that, what, what role can we play here in all this solid development process? This is a borough issue. I mean, what, what role can we play in this?
I guess to the extent that there's any major concerns that you would express, that you ask councils to take that into consideration in their decisions. If there's something that you think their engineer or somebody in their department who reviews plans oversaw or overlooked, you bring it to their attention. I mean, sometimes the more eyes on something, the better. Something that would maybe, you know, they may not be aware of the impact to a property in West Goshen or an intersection in West Goshen. That's something that you're looking at from those eyes versus, you know, they're looking at it from the eyes of what's happening to the borough, borough ordinance potentially.
Or a potential environmental impact. Have you seen other townships, the description?
As I look at, at this, where, where it's located, all the traffic, let's assume it's the large tractor trailers, they're all going to navigate the roads in the township, both to and from this site.
That's a, that's what I was thinking. The roads are going to be.
There's no doubt it's going to impact us, no question.
Right, right.
But at what, what standing do we have to be able to make any adjustments in your plans?
Yeah, and maybe there's signage or like a traffic plan to come out onto your roads that you would encourage them to do it in a certain manner, and you're, you get that upfront and maybe they, they agree to it before they get a tenant, and that's something that's shown on a land development plan, and that's something that's, you know, uh, the sooner that the proposed tenant knows about those restrictions, the better it is. So that may be helpful.
More contributive cost.
Well, that, that we can't get. You can't get off-site group of costs.
So where are we in the process then? What would the timeline be for us to look at this with the information that we have? Because obviously, there's probably no intent of this plan.
As far, as far as I can tell, I don't know how far along they are in the approval process, so I'm assuming.
I think they're fairly new into it.
Yeah, I'm assuming it's pretty relatively new. We got this from the county, I want to say it was like July, it was like the last, it was last week of July.
Does it reference the date of the plan from the letter? Because I don't think they've gone to a planning commission in the borough yet. I think that's coming up this month.
So the only thing we could do is put together a list of concerns that we have from a legal perspective and environmental to them, but they don't really have to adhere to anything relative to our concerns.
Yeah, but I, I think that, I think that the Borough Planning Commission and the Borough Council would want to hear what you have to say, and I think that they would take it, you know, seriously. And to the extent that they felt that they could put that pressure on the developer to make modifications or changes, I think that they would request that. Yeah.
So the plan, the plans were dated June third, so they're about two months old.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at this Chesapeake County Planning Commission.
No, that's one.
Yeah, I know, but they received, they probably submitted on or off the date.
I'm looking at this primary issue number four. This has transportation impacts that are prepared by McCallan Associates and dated May twenty twenty-two was included with the planning permission. So we received that.
Yeah. The only information we have received was this letter from the County Planning Commissioner and the plans, so.
I can get you that. We had asked, I had called when, uh, Chris called me about this letter, I contacted Kevin who were at the borough, and I asked him to send over the plans. He was originally going to put a drop-off so that we could access everything that was submitted, so we'll make sure we get that.
And so I, I think what we would want to do, uh, Mr. Chairman, to your point, is we would want to have McCormick Taylor review this traffic impact study.
Yeah, I mean, this particular letter from the Planning Commission goes on to say the proposed improvements recommended in this study, the traffic study, including restricting off-street parking along the East South Avenue Street. I'm not sure I really call, call that an improvement, but anyway. And it goes on to say the municipal engineers for West Chester Borough, West Goshen Township, along with Pendoff, should review the findings of the transportation impact study. In particular, township officials in consultation with Pendoff should determine additional, additional being what more, the restricting off-street, off-site parking, if additional off-site improvements are needed in this area in addition to those proposed in the transportation study. So there's an, I mean, you know, we, we should take advantage of saying what do we think is needed. And if, so many natural for their consideration in going through the land development process. So that's definitely something we need to, I don't know, you know, what timeline is, but we need to make sure we, we're not too late to provide that input.
I don't think you are. I'll try to get from Kevin also when they intend to appear before the planning commission. So in the borough, they'll go to the planning commission, and then the plan will go through their committee structure, which is called the Smart Earth Committee, which is three members of council. So they'll go there first for a recommendation before they go to a full council meeting. So I don't believe that's happening in terms of getting to a council meeting in August. I think that's probably, early this would be the September meeting.
Okay.
But I'll try to get that information tomorrow and send it off.
Do we know if they went with Act Two or what is field on that property?
I think it's an Act Two.
Is it?
Yeah, I can, I can, we can try to get that information. I know the borough was included and copied and has all that information.
Yeah, that'd be interesting to know, too. Does that all depend on the contamination, what they're going to do with it, if anything, and how they're going to treat it?
Sure.
Get that.
Other questions from the board?
Well, are you looking for a recommendation for the board tonight to retain the services of the, uh, Patrick McKenna and Andrew Parker?
Yes, I'm looking, looking for authorization from the board to retain the same, the same two parties that we retained with the Amazon project.
And what would be the script of their work? What, what would they do?
They would do, I would say they would do the exact same work that they do with Amazon. They would review the traffic impact study and provide comments. They would attend meetings of the Borough Planning Commission and the Smart Earth Committee if requested, um, and then provide, um, and then coordinate with the applicant's team regarding any sort of mitigation measures that are found, primarily as it relates to the, uh, to the traffic impact study. I don't see how we have a whole lot of say. I, I, I don't see how the township has a whole lot of say or leverage in anything related to the specific site. I think the traffic is more the area where we have specific say primarily because they're going to, as I said earlier, they're going to have to traverse the roads in the township in order to enter and exit this site.
John, you think it'd be advantageous for us to meet the mayor?
Yeah, certainly, we can.
To discuss this and see what they're thinking.
Yeah, but still, I think it'd be good to have this legal.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Expert.
I, I. I don't want to, I don't want to discount any of that, but having, you know, worked in a, worked in a borough for a number of years, the mayor doesn't have too much oversight when it comes to land development. It can hurt to have the conversation. I just don't know how much.
She has a borough plan.
Put an honor every position, I understand.
Chris, what do you think this is going to cost in terms of the, these two professional service providers?
Maybe five to $10,000.
Do we have a not to exceed, you approve tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what you're asking for. I have a, hey, the board's generally in favor of having some input into this process, so I'm looking, let's have a motion. So I wanted to make the motion to engage the two service providers that Chris described with a not to exceed figure.
If you just made that motion, I'll second it.
Well, the not to exceed figure is what? Seven and a half thousand for now?
Yeah.
And, and specifying the script of work that you just described, Chris? You know, how you just described it. Pretending we make a report, traffic study, or that's not.
Okay, so I made a motion then to approve the engage of those two professionals. So if I had to run up to see the amount, seven and a half thousand dollars. Do you have a second? Is there any further questions from the board on the motion? Any public comments or questions on the motion?
Doug?
I mean, general agreement, but I guess there's still the risk that even though we can retain the services, uh, we could still not get, uh, our concerns fixed.
Kind of a risk, yes. Any other questions or comments? Ready to take a verbal in favor, say aye? Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Very good. So next on the agenda is item number seven, discussion of possible authorit. Discussion, discussion of possible approval of a small wireless facilities right-of-way use agreement between West Goshen Township and Verizon Wireless.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the board this evening is an agreement between Verizon and West Goshen Township for the location of small wireless facilities in public right-of-way. Exhibit A of the proposed agreement, there are seventeen sites that would be, would have these facilities. Uh, the agreement would cover a ten-year period and the township would receive an annual fee for allowing these facilities in the public right-of-way, uh, similar to a franchise agreement with capable providers. Uh, just by way of background information, uh, there was an ordinance that was adopted in 2020, uh, regulating small wireless facilities. I provided a copy of that ordinance to, uh, to the board. Uh, there was also a standard small wireless facility right-of-way agreement that was subsequently approved by the board on August eighteenth, 2020. Um, I did have this agreement reviewed by the solicitor's office, and it does match our standard agreement. Uh, and as permitted, the board also adopted guideline, design guidelines, uh, with resolution number seventeen, twenty twenty-one in, uh, in October of 2021. Um, so essentially, the authorization would be to, or the, the request would be to approve the right-of-way agreement between the township and Verizon Wireless for these facilities. There was a previous agreement that was done with AT&amp;T in a similar nature. Um, they would still need to submit permit applications that would be reviewed against the township's design guidelines, um, and then they would be subject to the fees that are in accordance with our ordinance and our policies.
And that's, oh, I believe, but if the fees for this agreement are in Exhibit A, is that correct?
Correct.
And those fees are dictated by the borough law.
Okay, so the one-time application fee is a hundred dollars per site, um, and then the per-year fee is $200 per, per year for fifteen of the sites and $270 for two of the sites. And I believe, I forget, there was a red, I forget the rest.
Did you own the poles?
Because we own them, there's an additional $70 fee for them.
That was my question. Why do we want to retain ownership of the poles?
You already do. You're already your poles.
We already own that.
These are being, these are being installed on existing poles.
Okay.
Yeah.
Totally, these poles are all existing because there's this and language need about any new poles needed, but these are all existing poles. Most of them are already Verizon landline-related, a couple of Pico and a couple of township.
Yep, correct.
So on the fee schedule B, how many is there? Seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, because it says up to five small.
There are, there are seventeen total sites. Um, so, I don't know. Yeah, there are seventeen, there are seventeen total sites.
Okay, I can see that in the review.
It's Exhibit A.
On the fat, page, it was page eleven.
Oh, okay.
So those are all the sites, and those are on the bridge of the poles.
So when these ordinances were adopted, the, the idea was that you have a standard agreement that you provide to every facility owner so that you're on a level playing field. So this was the same agreement that AT&amp;T was provided.
I know, I know we're going to get a chance to look at the actual, uh, design and review it against our design guidelines. I presume, I presume that most of them are going to look like the installation on, what shows on utility pole within the guidelines that are enclosed in the board package, because since they're all existing utility poles, including the Pico, it's going to look similar to that, correct? It's not, they're not new poles, they're not pendant poles, they're not light poles, so that's what we can expect to see. Any other questions from the board?
Well, just one quick question. The technical requirements and specifications, the licensee, which is this case Horizon, has to install these, uh, small wireless facilities, uh, according to our codes, uh, which includes adherence to the National Electrical Code according to grounding, um, well, our township is. Will our township zoning officer or somebody from the township inspect these installations after they're completed? Will ensure that they have met our requirements?
We don't, we don't perform any of the electrical inspections as it relates to building permits, so.
I'll make their part.
Is that something as part of our agreement with Verizon, that it would be done by third-party?
Well, they would require it, yeah. Yeah, they would be subject to, they would be subject to any requirements related to a building permit.
Okay, so part of the building permit, the township, and the full, the, for building permit, for electrical installation, would include having it inspected by a third, third-party underwriter?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
So you make a motion to approve the small wireless facilities right-of-way agreement with Verizon Wireless? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. Any final board comments or questions? Is there any public comment or questions? Doug?
Sean, who chooses the, the electrical inspector? Is that something, is that a, is that a contractor on our list?
Yeah.
There's, there's three choices on our list, and the applicant chooses.
And do they conform to the responsible contractor?
No, no, they wouldn't ask for, those are public projects. Those are private.
Any other questions or comments? Steve?
Oh, we already done this with AT&amp;T?
Yes.
Do I have to pull mine over?
If AT&amp;T won was in 20, sometime in late 2020.
Any, any other comments or questions? Okay, ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay. The motion passes four zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number eight, request for proposal for pension plan investment advisor services. Chris?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before the board is a draft request for proposal for pension advisor services. This has been discussed by the Pension Committee, and they recommended that this proceed forward at their meeting on July 27. The township's current investment policy outlines a three- to five-year period for the issuance of an RFP for the service. In drafting this, the responses would be due by, would be due by September 30th, 2022, and evaluated by the Pension Committee before making a recommendation for the board. Just for background information, the last time, the last time this was done was in 2016, and I believe we received 10 responses to the, to the RFP. There have been some changes to the RFP document, which is relatively similar to the previous one that was listed, because the Pension Committee has been discussing different types of investment opportunities at their recent meetings, and they're not, they haven't made any kind of decision on any sort of adjustments to how the assets are allocated, but they have incorporated questions into the RFP about how those would be handled from a prospective advisor. In terms of, in terms of who we would solicit from, this would be open to any sort of agency that handles public pension funds. The Pension Committee has asked that we send this to the list of respondents from 2016, including our provider Vanguard. Other than that, it is fairly, fairly straightforward, and it complies with the questions that are required in Act 44.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions from the board?
Uh, just for clarification, this is a question of professional services, so we do not have to take the lowest bidder, correct?
Correct.
Is there a commencement date and length of contract that's being suggested as part of the order of payment?
No, because that is contained within your, that's contained within your investment policy. So generally, with pension services, it's relatively open-ended, but you do it like a five-year period of your investment policy, and that's a public document, so any respondent would be able to get a copy of our investment policy and see what our standard procedure is.
Yeah, if we don't happy with the investment advisors, or it's, you know, we didn't have a policy that liked to basically give notice terminate, go with different advisors, so it's, it's blue like any professional service provider.
Yeah, and if you would enter an agreement, then if you want to make sure that the same length was carried over, that you would sort of not will employ that job.
I mean, this is really doing the required due diligence exercise or responsibilities that are outlined in our investment document. We're a little bit late because of the COVID situation. It's not, Vanguard will absolutely be one of the people who will be submitting a bid to this project. They have performed well over the last 14 years, as we've talked about in various public meetings on their performance. So again, this is about seeing what is the, the best advisor that we can see, we can have in this current time, so. I do believe that there are, the Pension Committee has the expertise, and hopefully will do a good job on evaluating the responses with staff, and that what will come to the board as a recommendation will be a wealth of all through recommendations as to who to use.
I think what they did last time, if I'm remembering the discussion correctly, was they, they received the responses, reviewed them, and picked of the 10 or 11 responses that they received, they picked a, I think, board to interview and do site visits with. So they actually went to the offices, did site visits, interviews with partners, before making the recommendation on an advisor to the board. So I feel like they'll probably follow a similar process here.
Has there been dissatisfaction with the current advisors?
No.
So this is just part of our protocol every five years, we've been.
I specifically asked them on the 27th that there was any reason not to include Vanguard in this request for proposal. They all unanimously said they had no issue including Vanguard.
Any other public questions or comments? So Chris, you're looking for a motion to authorize the signing of the request for proposal?
Aye, it's Mr. Chairman.
So a motion to authorize an RFP for pension plan investment advisor services. I'll also give the motion to find all four comments and questions. Any public comments or questions? Yeah, ready to take the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Up next is agenda item number nine, discussion of possible approval of costs associated with emergency repair work on Bantry Lane, Bantry Road.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening is information regarding emergency repair work to underground storm sewer piping on Bantry Road. The image that Mr. Craig has on the screen shows the location of the project. Uh, this is similar, but on a much smaller scale to the project that was recently completed on Locksley Road. A small sinkhole developed on this, on this road was subsequently investigated by the Streets Department. Investigation revealed deteriorated corrugated metal piping. Completion of necessary repair involved a replacement of 120 feet of 24-inch pipe for a total estimated cost of $12,542. In terms of allocating this cost, I provided information related to both capital and our general fund. However, looking, and looking further on the, on the fund balances available, considering we've only spent about 30% of the budget on our materials out of the general fund, I'm thinking that we can allocate this to the general fund effectively and still have enough. I still have enough money, aye, and therefore, if not, if other repairs should come up. So this is just to make, this is pretty much to make the board aware of this unforeseen repair that's going to have to be made.
So we have the HDP pipe that's up on the Locksley Road, but we had to go over the aluminum pipe. So availability, our, our number, right, is it a different size to that?
I believe so, yes.
Have we got a, do a 24-inch pipe again?
Yes. I believe so, yes. Fair.
Yeah, it's 24-inch HDP, and the 24-inch HDP is available for money.
I think the, I think the issue with, with Locksley Road was the size of the pipe, and we couldn't secure the size of the pipe, or the, or the.
For, for, and David, we're lucky.
What about the Locksley Road?
Yes, I think so.
So this is the Wacka model neighborhood, right? Canterbury, all these sinkholes, this is like the third or fourth problem we've had in the last couple of years over there.
Correct.
Take more account.
So, Chris?
And this is, this is one of the areas, I believe Mr. Woodward said this, this was to me after the meeting last time. This was one of the areas when HRG was reviewing it that was, had a lot of red and yellow in it.
So I was going to ask, is this, was this section of pipe reviewed by HRG? And that's, I think we discussed it last meeting, and so was it highlighted as a double red?
Yes.
Red bold?
Yes, and yes.
It was reviewed, and yes, it's red. And there's a lot more red around it.
And I, I believe Dave said when they, if I'm remembering this correctly, directly, this correctly, wrong, when they cambered this pipe, when they were investigating it, I believe the bottom of the pipe was gone.
It has no bottom.
Yeah.
That's, that's typical of what we see in the.
So this was on, like closer to the top of our list for neighborhoods that really need this work done?
Well, we don't have the list yet. HRG's still evaluating it, but they've got red, green, blue, or, no, red, green, blue. Red, yellow, green, color scheme, red being the worst, and a lot of the same with the red. So there's no prioritization yet, because there's a whole lot of the factors that go in that. The red means either the bottom of the pipe is gone, or the bottom of the pipe is severely compromised, or there's some other major structural issue.
What do you think, the fact that there have been multiple sinkholes in this neighborhood should be, I mean, HRG is going to look at it.
Probably going to be a pretty bad.
Now, is it costing us more money because it's a cold emergency kind of situation, and have we planned this out?
Actually, this is costing us probably less, because it's being done in-house. The scope of this is such that we can do it in-house, buy the materials ourselves, do the work ourselves. That's the cheapest way to do it by far. So, you know, would it have been better to know ahead of time? Sure. But it wouldn't, in this particular case, it wouldn't have been any cheaper. Now, multiply this by factor 10 and increase the size of the pipe, way different answer.
Which we could be there.
Well, we will have some of those, for sure. So when you did the camera work on the line, pretty confident it's just 120 feet? Or did you go, is there some areas that you couldn't see, and when we get into it, it might be a bigger project?
I wasn't there for the camera work, but my understanding is that pretty comfortable with what's being replaced here.
Okay, and Chris, you're saying you want to use the tool of the maintenance, road maintenance materials out of general fund?
Uh, yes, we spent about 30, we spent about 30% of that, of that budget year-to-date. So there is adequate availability to fund this project, with availability in case anything else comes up. In looking at capital, we do still have some payments left for the Pine Valley Amelia Drive project. That project's, because of some unforeseen conditions, is going to be a little, a little bit over budget than what was in there before. So I think, given the, given the scope and the estimated cost remark, I think I'm comfortable with the general fund for this application.
Sounds good to me, just avoid any concerns or questions about that.
Just to follow up a question on the government, 40 feet, is that going to replace all that piping that's on Bantry Road? Or is this going to tie into existing C and D?
Ties into existing, there's much more pipe on there, right?
Well, my only question then would be, is, is pipe along Bantry Road beyond this 120-foot section as in bad shape as this, would it be worthwhile to expand the scope of this project at this point?
I, I really can't answer that, because I wasn't there when the investigation was done for the TVing, but they're not going to tie into questionable pipe. So what I'm guessing is that, and unfortunately with cordyne metal pipe, just because part of it's bad doesn't mean all of it's bad. And there's not really a rhyme or reason to where the bad stuff is. It depends on soil conditions, embedding, and ground moisture content, and a whole bunch of variables. So, yeah, if they weren't tying in sound material, they wouldn't be doing it. They'd say, you know, we need another 300 millimeter feet to get to sound material. But how sound it is, um.
I just wonder if we should just, if we're looking at just a band-aid repair here, or, you know, permanent fix or not, so.
Well, I think the way to look at this particular neighborhood is, from the preliminary indications from HRG, we got a lot of problems in this neighborhood. But there are other neighborhoods that have a lot of problems too, so. Right now, we need to put out the fires, fix the major emergency type issues, and then, you know, get this scheme for getting this fixed in the long term. And, you know, we may be back here in a couple of years, dimming the light for the rest of the public. But right now, we don't know what the answer to that is, because we're still in the evaluation phase, so.
Thanks, Rick. Any other questions? So, good to go. We got any motion on this one, right?
I mean, a motion, a motion never hurts to have a doctor.
Since it was on the planet, it's a matter, you're right, okay. So, would, is, someone, would you like to make the motion to approve the motion to repair for Patrick Wobbe?
I'll make a motion.
Well, soon.
Okay, you got a motion, so any other comments or questions? Any public comments or questions? Doug?
Uh, Rick, this neighborhood Canterbury, wasn't this built in the late 80s?
I don't know exactly when, probably around that timeframe, but I don't know exactly when.
D, assuming that's the case, would you say that something else is going on here, that all this place problems are premature?
No, they're not premature at all. Normal lifespan of cordyne metal pipes between 30 and 35 years, so it's right on target.
I guess the other factors you mentioned too, like, you know, soil conditions and all the rest, it really affects the life, but.
Yeah.
Do you have other neighbors that I thought don't have the issue, because maybe the groundwater is not reaching their prime? Okay. So the motion is accepted, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, any other public comments or questions? Ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is item number 10.
10.
Discussion regarding support requests from the Westchester Fire Department. Chris?
I'll take it, Mark, too.
You'll take that one?
Yes.
Forward, okay, yeah, thank you.
The next agenda item is relative to requests from the Westchester Fire Department. I just want to mention that all three of these were discussed at the Coalition meeting that we recently had, and they were brought out basically by the Westchester Chief, our Borough, Steve Pelna, who had some very good suggestions to try to recruit some volunteers. And we discussed it very briefly at the Coalition. I said at that time, we had not had the opportunity to discuss it with the board, so tonight we will make that discussion. The three areas that the Fire Department thought we can, that West Goshen Township could assist in was one, providing a grant writer when opportunities are available, was a suggestion by Steve. Second of all, a tax incentive for volunteers, was another issue. And also a fee specific for high occupancy facilities, kind of generating a little bit of money. After reviewing the item, the three items that I just mentioned, Chris actually went into, starting with the first one, which is a grant writer. I guess even from a legal perspective, township can't offer the support to the Fire Department based on both the resource and equitability perspective for that particular item. From the resources, the township doesn't have staff dedicated to the service for the Fire Department. And from an equity standpoint, since the township is serviced by three fire and EMS providers, we have to offer tall great at that point, and the resources just aren't there for that. Even though the Westchester Fire Department is a little unique, because they basically have all volunteer personnel, township can't offer the service to our organization without offering tall great, and obviously the resources are not there at this point. We can, we can offer the Westchester Fire Department, or any other fire or EMS organization, data or letters of support to attach to the application if needed, that would help any. Regarding the second issue, which is a tax incentive for volunteers, Act 172 of 2016 does allow municipalities to offer real estate or earned income tax credit to active members of the volunteer fire companies and nonprofit EMS agencies through a volunteer service credit program. Obviously, certain criteria have to be met, which is pretty much outlined in our documents here, what the active volunteers have to meet. Each municipality may choose whether to offer the earned income tax credit, the real estate tax credit, or both, you can certainly offer. The law was effective January 20th, 2017. For earned income tax credit, the credit may be up to the entire amount of the tax paid. For the real estate tax credit, it may not exceed 20% of the volunteer's real estate liability. And then, of course, we have to attach information. And then, of course, we have attachment relation relative to that. As of right now, there are, there's a few municipalities, I think there'll be online.
I found eight in Chester County.
That are participating in that program right now currently. Recommended the board request examples of these types of ordinance from the Westchester Fire Department will be you.
At least the example, I think we found the example.
Yeah, we found, so we're okay with that.
The research I did yesterday.
Yeah, so I think we're okay on that. It's just a matter of whether the board wants to move ahead with that. I guess, I guess my personal position on that is, yes, it will recruit potentially volunteers, and I'm sure about that. But regardless of that, even the existing E M S and fire volunteers that we have, I feel should be compensated. You know, even, even if it's an incentive also to recruit new volunteers and all that. And then the third thing, for high occupancy buildings, the fee would be assigned for multifamily dwelling units and other large occupancy buildings. I guess after Chris spoke to Chief Pellna at the coalition meeting, there are different methods that must be used in situations in these type of facilities that makes them more challenging. And I guess Chris reviewed this with the township solicitor, and we're not aware of any enablement legislation that would permit the township to enact such a fee.
Yeah, the second class code says exactly what kind of feature of all those, and this doesn't fall into that. You can't single out types of dwelling units, this kind of fee.
So I guess the, the action that is in front of the board tonight is, the only one that we can really act on is a tax incentive. If we wanted to pursue that option, for existing and of course, I think we really need volunteers.
I did, I did forward to the board, this was actually discussed by the township back in two thousand and seventeen after this legislation was enacted by the state and went into effect. However, in reviewing the minutes from those discussion items, it looks like it was discussed around March or April two thousand and seventeen and then just kind of faded. Because I couldn't find any record of where was decided not to go forward with it or when it was, you know, voted upon or anything like that.
If God don't find.
So you said you found, you found eight municipalities that are going with Inchester County?
Correct.
Yeah. How often doing?
I don't have the dates off the top of my head. I would assume it was sometime around two thousand and seventeen when the legislation went into effect. But the municipalities I found were, there was East Coventry, I know New Garden Township was one of them, I believe West Brandywine. And not all of them did both the earned income tax credit and the real estate tax credit. I believe one or two out of the eight that I found only did the real estate tax credit. Pretty much everybody, everyone else did the E I T and the real estate tax credit.
So I would want to know if volunteers are taking advantage of actually claiming the credit? And if that, how that's affecting their numbers or recruitment in their township? And that's a question I would have.
I don't have a great memory, but I think part of it was somewhat of an administratively burdensome process. And at the end of the day, the thought was, is it really going to recruit that many people? Especially if the limit, not that everybody can use a tax credit, right? That's not, I'm not belittling that. But I think when it's, when it's capped at twenty percent of your bill, you know, we're talking not that significant for a township tax. Your township tax bill is not that much. Taking twenty percent off versus the paperwork that was needed on both ends. And sitting here tonight, I also remember there was something that to be eligible, the fire companies or whatever, E M S providers had to, themselves had to have policies in place to identify who was an active participant and who was, who was eligible from their end to be able to apply for it. And that's, I know there was some coordination with some of the entities at that time, but it just never sort of got off the ground because there was a thought processes that is, at the end of the day, is this really going to recruit a significant number of people? Is this little bit of a tax credit going to really influence somebody to, who for other reasons may not want to join and now they're going to get a little bit of tax credit? Is that enough to push them to say, yes, I want to participate?
And Chief Thomas couldn't be here this evening, but I know we do have a representative from the Westchester Fire Department. He may be able to answer the question about if it's done anything with other departments and jurisdictions to increase volunteerism. I can't answer that question.
I mean, good evening. My name's Don Hurd, uh, with Westchester Fire Department. I mean, you know, we're looking for, really, like you said, you know, it's, it's red crumbs in a lot of ways. But anything that we can do to entice people to volunteer, for active volunteers to stay. You know, it's a lot cheaper to fund a little bit for, towards volunteer incentive than if we need to require going to paid personnel. Now, I know, you know, Goshen Good Fellowship have, have a significant expense because of the requirement for, for paying personnel. Uh, you know, we've, we've been active, we've been doing stuff what we can with low cost mortgages and that to encourage people to, to stay in the area. You know, one of the problems that we have in particulars, we have younger members. We invest time and effort and money into training them. They grow up. They fall in love, they get married, and they can't afford housing in here. So they wind up moving to other areas. We're losing people because of the housing prices in this area. So anything that we can do to encourage people. Is it going to be a lot in all honesty? I can't answer you. But anything we can do, any amount of people that we can keep. You know, you've heard the statistics before, you know, in the nineteen eighties, you know, late seventies, early eighties, we have about three hundred thousand volunteer firefighters in Pennsylvania. Now, depending on whose statistics you look at, we're down to thirty to thirty-seven thousand volunteer firefighters in, in the entire state. And, you know, we're trying to do everything we can to maintain our level of service to, to the municipalities and also maintain at a reasonable cost.
Thank you.
Can I ask, do you have any members now who are utilizing these tax credits for, for income work tax or for the real estate, you know?
No, because it's, it's not, has been adopted by, by any municipalities here. Yeah, I know in, in, there's additional municipalities in Montgomery County that have adopted it, Lower Merriam just recently adopted it. Uh, Montgomery Township, Abington Township, they're all involved in, in the process, you know. Trying, once again, just a little incentive, a little carrot out there to try and encourage people and, and give them some incentive to, to volunteer and be involved.
Do you have a, do you have a program where college students or younger people stay for free?
We, we have, the stations have a, a live-in program, uh, you know, whether it's our own members or things that are successful in recruiting some people out of, out of college. The other two stations have live-in facilities where, where we're offering that to the members. We're also very active doing re- uh, recruiting and retention. Our, our recruitment division is out very active. They've been at the college fairs, the high school job fairs and that, out trying to recruit members as we go along. You know, part of the problem is, you know, everybody's busy. People don't, don't have a lot of spare time for it. And that's, that's what we're fighting to try and hold on. And once we do get people, you know, it takes probably three to five years to get a good trained firefighter. And we're getting them to that point, and then they're moving on just because of the affordability of the area.
And like I, look at this as retain and recruit, both. I hear you, and I actually wouldn't have guessed that that was the issue until I'm hearing it from you. That the housing prices are so high here that why would they just not say? The more incentive you give them.
Yeah, that's true.
Doug?
Could I ask, could I ask one other question in reference to the impact fee? Were you looking at, when you said there's, there's no mechanism to fund that, was that looking at only existing structures or, or new construction?
I'm looking at the second class township code, which is the governing document that gives this authority to impose fees, which is not in that code that would, that I believe gives them the right to impose such a fee.
Okay. Cause I know previously other municipalities over the years have been able to assess impact fees. Now, whether it's been in an agreement, a gentleman's agreement or whatever, I don't know. By knowing certain areas, as new projects come into an area that bring in a new type of firefighting requirement. For instance, I know with the, the Exton Square Mall, when that went in in West Whiteley years ago, the mall funded additional apparatus for West Whiteley Fire Department. Now, I don't, I don't know if that was done officially through the municipality or if that was some type of agreement.
I think that was a, if I'm really correct, I think that was a condition of a conditional use approval, which is a separate type of approval that does give the government body a bit more authority and leverage. But those things would have to be agreed upon.
That wasn't here, right?
No, it's not.
No, no.
But in terms of having to, what Kristen is saying, in terms of having a set fee, in order to do anything like that, they need, the board needs the legislative authority to be able to do that, and that doesn't exist.
I, I know there was back in two thousand and thirteen, I think there was an act proposed to, to amend the, the impact fee. It applies to transportation now to allow, well, and I guess that dieting committee, I believe.
I believe you're correct. Like, much like, much like many things. Um, but if a development were to come and require conditional use approval, I don't, Kristen, please correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think it would be out of line if there was going to be an impact of firing an E M S service for the board to ask for some kind of fee or contribution to the service provider due to the impact that it would have on their ability to serve.
But that would be on an individual project basis.
Okay. And the applicant would have to agree to that condition.
Thank you.
Doug, excuse me, I have just a question. Does every volunteer with the Westchester Fire Company have to reside within one of the service municipalities? Or could they reside outside of the service area?
Uh, no, there's no residency requirement. As a matter of fact, I myself technically live outside the Westchester Fire Department area. I'm on the wrong side of South Concord Road, I'm across from the sort of, so I technically live in Goshen's response area. We have a lot of members over the years that moved out of the immediate area. We also have personnel that may be available only during the daytime. They're working in the area, they stay as active members and they're available during the daytime. They may live at, in other areas of the county or the area.
Do you have any active members that, so just coming back to the tax incentive discussion, do you have any active members who live in one of those communities, in one of the communities in Chester County, such as like New Garden Township or anywhere like that that?
No, not, not that I'm aware of, off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
You're going to find active members who have been with us a lot of times.
Okay. I was, I was just curious to see if there was an active member who could provide insight on.
This isn't a cure-all.
I didn't understand.
It's a little incentive. I mean, it really works towards recruitment or retention. We're trying to do that. The thing that's nice about this is it not only helps, say, me, who I have a property, who has a couple of properties who must get retention, okay? But it also helps the younger individual who is just working in the township. And I think if the West Goshen kind of starts the ball rolling in the area, I think it'll help the boroughs. The Borough Council's talked about this only four borough councils, and I think we just need somebody to take the ball here and get it rolling. And we're probably not going to find, it's not going to be maybe one to twenty or thirty people. It's not going to be a huge amount of people. And I think it will help incentivize some people maybe to stay, okay, as well as maybe at some point, they emphasize, they appreciate it, and they show. But I think the township starts something going here. I think it will help the borough, maybe West Town and the surrounding townships. And then, once everybody starts participating, that makes everything work, okay? But, and I think the chief could probably give you numbers about who, who resides in the township as opposed to the borough and West Town. But you'd be surprised, there's a lot of people that, that do. It's only for active people, it's not for people that are not active.
I think my recommendation to the board as it relates to this topic would be to review the ordinance that was prepared in two thousand and seventeen and for me to reach out to the managers of the eight municipalities that have Inchester County have adopted this, just to see what the experience is about.
Yeah, I agree. I, I agree with you, though. I don't think it's going to be a huge number of people. I thought, I thought we're guessing, I wouldn't expect it to be.
It's not going to be a huge methodology when it comes down to it. I mean, I think it's a little incentive to throw out there. I mean, quite frankly, these days, you know, it's expensive to be volunteering. Not only are you, are you willing to give up your life for somebody else, but you got to pay it to them.
I agree with you, it's a bit of an effort.
You, you need, what is it, a hundred hours of training, just a hundred, like?
Hundred eighty.
Hundred eighty.
Yeah, that's a lot. That's a lot of commitment.
You talked about reaching out to the managers of the other municipalities. Are they just, isn't it really the fire companies that are in those areas that are really going to know if this is helping contain or recruit people more than managers of the?
I don't know what fire companies service those municipalities, so I don't know who to reach out to. So they may have, they may know who to reach out to, they may have information.
Or they may know how many people have asked for the exemption, for the credit.
Yeah, that's good. That would be a good, that would be a good. Yeah, so again, like, actually just having a note straight away they have, once you set it down, it's straightforward, et cetera.
What is that going to tell us? I mean, five people signed up versus fifteen people signed up, what is?
Just that they're taking advantage of it.
It's going to see if, and if anyone's taken advantage of it.
And what if there's one person that took advantage of it? And that's good? What's our measure of it?
It's just knowledge. I think it's just.
Being fully informed of whether this is, you know, worth, worth doing or whatever, you know, is it?
Or would that be?
Well, you said only one person, I didn't, twenty, what analogy was that? It's a really good retention tool.
I don't know if you can measure that, but.
I don't know either, but we don't have any data, so.
Just for retention, to me, is, is enough.
Yeah, it sounds like it would be appealing, I agree. I, I would like a little more information, I could ask. I mean, I'm hearing Jerry, the board feels supportive, I'm trying to, are you supporting?
Yeah, I think Chris just has a good idea, just looking at the twenty seventeen ones, that was considered before, nothing done with it. And then I'll check around with a few other township managers.
Get some more.
For them. And then maybe in our next meeting, we can do it. And maybe, well, we can adopt it, we have the public, so at least we get an authorized publication of it.
And I think that, um, what Kristen was saying, if there's administrative elements on the town, on the municipal side as well, I can get an understanding from those municipalities about if there's any kind of an administrative burden that's involved. Because in any decision that I recommended for, we also have to take into account any sort of potential burden that may be placed on our staff.
It looks like it was a lot with the firehouse testing heat.
Yeah, it looks like it's more on the firehouse than on the.
Yeah, exactly.
Every recording system that the chief can, we got, we file a report for every call. Everybody who comes, everybody shows up. And there's a pretty good recording system because we're looking at doing things like, uh, right now, for example, the Fireman's Relief, might be trying to do some sort of length of service or something. Okay, so that, and that'll be even more comprehensive, but we can give weird side points to, on the meetings you make, a couple of calls, training, there's a whole list of things. Because these, the department, you know, you just take a firefighter on the street, well, that's the number one thing, our job is to get the trucks out. But we're all running small businesses too, okay? To keep the firehouse running, you know, we've got a budget, we've got to fix things, we've got to bring in money. You know, it's a, it's a complete cycle, it's a long tier. So, um, we also want to incentivize those people to help, just like you and the board members here, okay? You need an incentive, and where you need some sort of compensation, we got to give them a couple of things, it's just the way it is.
Yeah, just for clarification, now, this is for, according to Act one seventy-two, it's for active members of volunteer fire companies. And now you, some fire companies have both career as levels of volunteers. This would only apply to the volunteer segment of your staff, not to the career folks.
Yes.
That's correct, that's correct.
But you'll have, if you go out to a publishing, and also to Goshen Fire Department, you'll probably find, you know, they have also volunteers obviously living in the township. And they have career people as well, but.
Right, but it only applies to the volunteers, not to the career people, okay?
Keep in mind, this is for fire and E M S.
Yeah.
So is the board entertaining all three companies to be eligible for this? Or is it all new?
You can't, once you do it.
Yeah, I'm saying, so it's forever on that.
Right, just to make that clear.
Where are you with, have you been lobbying the Borough Council lately on this same issue, or are they, or are they with this?
Well, I think this is kind of in our meeting, because we were discussing things we can do for each other.
Yeah.
And we got to, I think Steve's got to go back to Borough Council and get the, get the ball rolling again. But I mean, obviously, between West Goshen and West Chester Borough, the majority are members.
So is anyone in the public light comment on weighing on this subject, Doug?
There'd be a threshold of hours that the volunteer would have to serve, they'd get their tax credit.
Yeah, there's, and I think it has to be established of where, you know, how active they are.
The act sets, the act sets a work of guidelines.
I think this is a good thing because you have savings when you want long rest, you have more volunteers, the entire company wouldn't have to come and increases. you have more volunteers, and our company wouldn't have to come, and increases.
I would go that far.
I think.
But it would, it would help the volunteers.
Any other comment?
So, so we'll look at the twenty seventeen ordinance, and I will contact the municipalities from certainly previously.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is item number eleven, discussion regarding the potential funding contract with Good Fellowship of Work for EMS services in West Goshen Township. Yes, as a board, a discussion item. Someone would like to introduce this subject, based on Kristen's memo?
I guess, get started off, this was, um, your original concept was, came through coalition. Um, we talked about it with the EMS and the fire. And after that meeting, um, Kim kind of spearheaded a separate meeting with all the municipalities to come together to talk about this topic and some different rate structures, of how, or fees, I guess we should say, how to be formulated, should be formulated, in addition to the actual contract itself. Um, obviously, she was dealing with the EMS side, we spoke fireside too, and coalition, we talked about having two separate contracts. Or if they want more, at least to separate it out within the one contract, because it made more sense from their standpoint. Well, we'll be, so it's gonna be the next coalition meeting again, but Kim kind of, as you can start here, where she had different type of people, was depending on fifty-fifty split, sixty-forty, seventy-five, twenty-five, eighty, twenty, um, were her different examples. And in those examples, there was only about a thousand dollar difference between each thousand, maybe two thousand dollars difference, between the different formula percentages. Um, and then she also attached a contract that actually was from, between the city of York, which is an EMS contract, for an example, the different stuff that they had within the contract. And then the other contract that is existing now was the Westchester Borough, and it's been existing since, you know, probably thirty-five years. Um, again, with a different formula. So, at this point, I don't, I think she's looking for feedback from the different municipalities, and at least for Goodwill, that was ten municipalities she's dealing with, to try to get everybody together on the same page. And in the meeting that we had, the first meeting, it went pretty well. And everybody is old municipalities, ten of them pretty much all the work of it. So it's just a matter of kind of finalizing it now, down to a formula that works for everybody. She actually gave a cause associated with each of the formulas for each township, and some how they would have to pay. So, the last thing I think we'll need after day per day again, to go over the review of the contract and formulas, and then meet again sometime after day per day to get the vision back. That's where we are with it.
Thanks.
And then I guess the next coalition meeting, we'll talk more about fire contracts. Not with the borough, but anything else. Do you wanna add to that, John?
Well, the next coalition meeting, I think it'll be a chance for Goshen Fire to step up and talk about their budgets and their five-year projections, and also to give us some idea of what the contracts are meant to be looking at from us, and breaking it out from fire services and EMS services.
And the other thing, as far as this contract, at least with EMS, we wanted to try, the coalition, we talked about trying to get this implemented by January of twenty-three. So, you know, we asked if that was enough time, we've been promoting to get the company something. Obviously, Goodwill already started the ball rolling, and Goshen did not give any resistance, said it was not a time frame, but we'll find out in the next meeting.
Okay, so now you're looking for a discussion of feedback around the information that's being provided?
Right.
Okay, so I'll kick it off. I mean, I had some questions I had around the information was, in terms of either discussion in coalition or feedback from G-PAC themselves relative to the different options that were shown on the splits of cost between a fifty-fifty, cost breakdown between population and coal volumes, all the way to a eighty-twenty split. Was there a particular consensus as to which way made sense to the participants in that discussion?
I guess my recollection would be that we didn't really discuss it, it was just given to them that day. Um, I think most people that I've talked to were leaning towards fifty-fifty split.
Was there a rationale for that?
It just never been the bearish way to do it, but.
Fifty-fifty just means how you break the cost down between a variable cost and a fixed cost to serve?
No, it's fifty percent based upon population and fifty percent based upon consideration of the coal volume.
Yeah, and my point is, is that, that depends, you know, to me, that means that you have a fixed cost to serve, you know, you have a coal.
Oh, okay.
And the variable cost is, hey, I have to scale those to be able to deal with the volume. If G-PAC says that is how their cost structure is best organized, then that would be a rationale for fifty-fifty split. We don't know, we don't. Okay, so that was one question. Uh, my other question is, in a contract, would we base it on actual prior year experience in dividing up costs? Or would we adjust for in-year data and pay on a quarterly basis based on coal volume changes experienced in the year of the contract? So any discussion on that?
Well, the concept here is, is have three or fixed amount for each year of a three-year contract. So it wouldn't be very.
It wouldn't be variable.
And it would be based upon.
So it's based on previous three years of coal volumes? It would be based on the average of the previous three years of coal volume?
That's one of the concerns I had with what they presented to us. For us, for example, the West Goshen, for our carbon coal volume is actually inflated because of actually one situation, which was occurring the last two years, namely twenty-two tonner of lean, which is no longer a situation we have within a township that has to be addressed. So actually, our coal volume is gonna be reduced. So these numbers are gonna be somewhat skewed because of that.
But, okay, I think since it's something to debate, I would, I would say, you know, we should, three, it's a three-year contract, we should have a process which agrees the, uh, the amount for the each year, and then it's adjusted in terms of its proportionation based on the coal volume that's experienced in the year. It's perfectly easy to do, we get fantastic data every month from the service providers, so it would be reflective of the actual experience during the contract cycle. So that's a suggestion to take to the coalition meeting. Um, you know, like, three year, the other thing is, you know, what, what process would the municipalities have with the service provider, G-PAC in this case, to, you know, bet the amount that's being requested? Understand the makeup of the ask in terms of, you know, what, what element is related to your capital equipment? What element is related to, um, you know, the cost of, of staff, et cetera? And how would the contract manage unforeseen issues that materially affect the cost? So I remember Kim saying that, you know, inflation pressures and wage competition from other providers was causing, you know, increased cost in the, the compensation area. And, you know, if you went into a fixed three-year contract and something like that explodes, you really need to have a flexible arrangement with the organ, you know, with the funding organizations to be able to have a mutually agreed process where those issues are discussed and resolved, so that it doesn't end up being, you know, something that's still a problem for the providers, that there's a mechanism to address unforeseen issues that affect the cost basis that was agreed as part of the contract. So those are the two issues I have.
We did discuss, I forget, it was at the meeting at Good Fellowship of Work, it was in the coalition meeting, but we did discuss including reopen our language to address exactly what you, what you were.
That should, that should be part of the.
That, yeah, we did discuss it both, and that language is already in the existing protocol too.
Yep.
And I actually had my suggested language, and I gave Kim expanded upon your concern that you just had, when I made my colleagues today yesterday.
Good.
So that's in our contract with questions to fire? Have we ever reopened?
I don't know, I don't have any answer, it's been around for thirty-some years, it's something I've been asking.
Uh, contract, not a contract, sorry, we had a little time with you guys for that long.
Started in five, yes, contract started, my first year as chief started in nineteen eighty-eight.
Yeah, that's been a while.
Yeah, we had to do that for next year.
It's renewed every, this last one's five years, it expires in twenty-three.
Yep.
Okay. So those were my kind of, is there any other key issues to raise to?
What was your second?
Well, there was a second one you already addressed, which is this whole reopen though because of unforeseen.
And you talked about the inflation wage and how we can address the.
That was really all about the same issue, that would be, would be something that G-PAC or whoever would say, hey, we have to have a reopen because, you know, wages for, you know, for staff has gone through the roof, we're losing, having to raise rates because of, et cetera, so. The, the other one was, I, I would prefer to see an in-year coal proportionation part of the contract, not based on history or whatever else, but read a number of fire and the proportionations adjusted as you go through the year based on experienced coal volumes by the municipality's mountain. As reflected of the real experience in that year. Any other input?
Yeah, the other, uh, further clarification I would like to see from, from Good Fellowship is the, uh, the base number that they're working with. They're claiming that there's approximately a million dollar pivot between their incoming revenue and their expenditures outgoing, and based upon that, fifty percent of that, they're gonna ask the municipalities to make up, and that's where they came up, this four hundred ninety thousand dollar figure, of which they distributed amongst the municipalities which they served. Um, I'd like to know where they got that four hundred ninety thousand dollar figure from, get more specific about, you know, what were the numbers, and are there ways in which they can be made more economical? Is there ways we can reduce that four hundred ninety thousand dollar figure? So I'd like to see more documentation from them on how they can drive, to rely on that.
Yeah, I mean, the downside of fixed grievances is that, does that mean that the pressure's not on as much to do as much work in, in the fundraising and, you know, et cetera, that therefore, as you know, you've got more guaranteed sources of making, so I agree with you, John, entirely, it needs a mechanism to be able to discuss and challenge the opportunities that have been worked on to reduce the administrative burden on the municipality.
Yeah, I agree with that, but her comment was there, was, you know, with the million dollars that we need, and it's fifty-fifty, you're getting four ninety, and I'll give them the other card, but I think if you break down what that.
All we don't know is, is historically, that fundraising's been six hundred thousand a year. She's been serving in, in saying we need to split fifty-fifty, I don't know, we just need more information to.
Doesn't have to do with them having the chief's insurance, or he needs to, for money to go down, right?
Well, that's not the, that's the insurance company, that's the recipient of the service.
Yeah, I, I might, they're not sending the checks, because they can't build the insurance company.
Right.
So they're, and they're giving the checks to the patient, the patients are giving the checks to the organization.
Right.
You know, and just historically, and I did raise this at the meeting we had with Good Fellowship, I mean, just looking at the contribution request that they made to West Goshen, Good Fellowship in twenty seventeen asked for six grand, you got it? Twenty eighteen, six grand, twenty nineteen, twenty-five thousand dollars. Twenty twenty was fifty thousand dollars. So you can see beginning in twenty nineteen, again, it just take off. And then twenty twenty-one, the last year, was eighty-six thousand dollars. And then the current year's the same amount, so, and now they're asking for a hundred and.
Thirty-one.
Hundred and thirty-six, or hundred and thirty, you know, hundred and thirty-one at the fifty-fifty split. So, the numbers that they've been asking for has really taken off, and I'm like, then why? I mean, is something really happening here that?
Service isn't free anymore. Okay, you don't have volunteers to command the ambulances. And plus, if you look at the ALS service, okay? If you've read the paper, Tower Health is doing away with their ALS service in Western Chester County. So they're not gonna have any advanced life support out there. You got a heart attack out of Carlsberg? You need to wait for a while for somebody to show up, you got an ambulance. But, you've gotta realize that services just aren't free anymore. And that's, that's what the realization of Good Fellowship, is they took on the ALS service. Obviously, they already had BLS services. And in order for the townships, the county, I think eventually the county has to step in and do something. But, you know, that's county doing something. You are gonna lose these services, because these businesses can't afford to, you know, staff, buy quarter million dollar ambulance, have them ready when you need it, okay? It's, it's a, that's a process here. I mean, I, I think they need to talk to Kim and to really talk about these things.
So is it a case of just, they were just, you know, funded for so long, and now things are just finally?
The hospital did away with Medicaid, okay? So, Good Fellowship picked it up, that's your ALS service. So you've gotta hire paramedics, you've gotta man, man the vehicles, you've gotta equip the vehicles with drugs. It's an expensive proposition. And again, I'm not, I can't, I just, I just by and of the background, you need to really speak with them. So they provide the ALS service now, they supply it, they supply it to most of the, uh, Goshen Fire Company does not do that, they just do BLS, okay? They don't do BLS, advanced life support. And honestly, if you ever run with them, and you're going, we don't want to be run cardiac arrest, okay? You need a medic there to administer drugs and to do the things that need to be done.
That's what I'm saying, we need to know more of the history of what was transpired prior, so that we can better understand, be able to explain to residents why we're having to contribute more.
Yeah, the borough's gonna be shifting all the townships and municipalities, is what's gonna happen? I mean, if you want the service.
Sure, and we do want to, we wanna support it, we're gonna support it in a way that's sustainable.
I, I think these are good questions for when you get to the next meeting, to talk to Kim and to, to clarify a lot of these questions. But they picked up the ALS service from the hospital, because the hospital, they, you know, ten, ten, one, they don't make any money out of it, okay, they lose money, so guess what? And that's the same thing that's happened with Tower Health in Western, Western Chester County. They, they set us up central first, and they're more ALS service out there, so, you know, I don't know what they're gonna do.
Doug, do you have a question?
I guess the funding that Good Fellowship gets from the state, should that be viewed separately? Has that, um, Representative Aaron's office reported that Good Fellowship received sixty thousand recently? Is that a new figure, or is that a recurring figure with the state?
That's a good question, I, to me, it's all part of this, splitting the million dollar gap between the revenue and their expenses, maybe the sixty thousand today is part of the four hundred nine thousand that they're asking for, right, so.
Okay.
It's in weeds, that kind of question relative to, Kim, can you help answer it? Any other public comments about the discussion? Okay, so Tina and John, you feel you've got some good feedback here in terms of continuing the discussion at the next meeting with, with the providers, feedback? Be good. Very good, so we'll move on to agenda item number twelve, the last one, bills to be paid. Approval of the bills to be paid in the general fund, the sewer revenue fund, the waste recycling fund, and the capital reserve fund. Is there a motion to pay the bills? I'm in for motion to pay the bills, so a second. Are there any comments, questions for the board on the bills to be paid? I, I had one, Chris, the payments to natural lands under the capital reserve fund, do you know what project they was, that's?
That was, there was an agreement that was executed regarding, it wasn't development, it was associated with the development and the management plan, I forget all the details, but there was, there were these that were associated, was executed sometime in May of twenty twenty-one. And I think it was for about sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Billings, do you want to see a voiceless poll of the services provided?
They invoiced us previously, but it hadn't been picked.
What was where that worked out?
That was for, that was part of the presentation that was done with the board back in September.
I'm glad you're here. Thank you for that.
I guess the pond service is at the window on, um, Spring Valley Pond Service, is that the pond or one of the parks, I guess?
Yes.
Four hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Yep. Any other questions on the bills? Any, any questions, questions from the public on bills to be paid?
And so, so showing that natural land, that was when they were here, they were talking about how to restore the, uh.
Dependent management plant or the woodlands part of. Dependent management plant, or capital, woodland, park, great stuff?
Yeah.
And to restore the?
The barracks.
The barracks.
Circuit barracks.
Circuit through there.
Okay, any other questions to the public? Okay, ready to take a vote, all the people say aye. Aye, all the people say nay. Motion passed, four zero. Ready to adjourn the meeting, I'll make the motion to adjourn the meetings for a second. Thank you. All the people adjourned, say aye. Aye. Meetings adjourned, thank you.